Will the clerk please call the roll?
Winters. Martin.
Here.
Eckhart. Sherman.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
All right. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at city council meetings, will be approved by one vote of the council. A member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held November 18, 2019, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $151,438.20 and payroll expenses of $212,391.35. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Sorry. I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. Hospital authority meeting on November 19th. Dr. Hannaford.
Highlights of this meeting. The hospital's been working a lot of IT, converting all things to the Windows 10, putting in a new phone system. Volume has been up both at the hospital and the clinic, which is good. Both Western students continuing their rotations out there. They have found coverage for Dr. Self, for his patients, when he goes on leave again for deployment. The recruitment is continuing for our doctors that I told you about. Nothing's been finalized yet, but negotiations are continuing on that. We had some approvals for, oh, let's see, purchase of, I already said the phone system. Really, the only other thing we did is we had approvals and disapprovals of eight different policies and procedures. Other than that, I will take any questions if you have any.
Does the council have any questions for Dr. Hannaford? Thank you. Next up is Tourism Tax Commission meeting on November 20, 2019. Mr. Martin.
There were three requests that were approved. The first one was just the proposed budget for the Tourism Advertising and Promotions Committee, which is essentially just a subcommittee, a tourism committee. The second one was the Alba Bull Battle Five. That was also fully funded. And then the last one was the all-class Alba High School reunion for 2020, request funds to kind of jumpstart that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you. C is the Alba Public Library Board meeting on December 20th. Mr. Eckhart's not here. You have the minutes, I believe, in your packet. Council have any questions on that? All right, next is the Alba Reina Authority meeting on December 3rd. Also, the minutes are there in your packet. Any questions on that? All right. Next item is the Alba Regional Airport Commission meeting on December 9, 2019. We had a pretty good meeting. We did approve our five-year capital improvement plan and future years for that. We approved the, or acknowledged the aviation gas purchase that the council approved at the last meeting. And we also discussed the taxiway and apron projects. And that discussion led to a direction to Joe Don to have the engineers figure on building our electrical system for that as we go. It's going to be a multi-phase project with the option to do the electrical all at once or as we go. The board opted to do that as we went. The only other thing, I'll let you guys know, is that under citizen comments, Todd Holder was present to express his appreciation for the installation of our new grass runway. That was, I guess it's not new anymore, but it's open and being used now. And we're, you know, came in on a day where the wind was blowing in a way that he wasn't going to be able to land here otherwise. So it was great for him that day, and I'm hopeful that others have been using it as well when they need to. And it'll just keep getting better. It's a little rough right now, but as that grass continues to grow in, it's going to get smoother. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Swimming pool task force meeting on December 10th. Task force met and chose its chair, vice chair, and secretary, and those are going to be Megan Caldwell as the chair, Greg Baker as the vice chair, and Renee Green as the secretary. They, Joe Don and I, did what we could to bring them up to speed on, you know, the information that we had from the past year worth of work and tried to answer any questions they had and basically gave them a little bit of direction moving forward that they're trying to put together a plan that our whole community can get behind. Let us know to the extent that they want us involved, and we will do that.
Their next meeting is tomorrow night.
Their next meeting tomorrow night at the pool?
Yes.
At the pool, they're wanting to look at the pool and all the measures they can for the things that are on the list from the Health Department. Any questions on that? Be happy to try and answer. They will be reporting to the Parks and Buildings Committee. So in the future, anything on that, we put that under Parks and Buildings. Cemetery meeting on December 11th. Joe Don, do you have anything on that?
It was a pretty routine meeting. Approval of claims and minutes. We did discuss, the chairman did bring up a letter that he had gotten from Mrs. Dorothy Erickson. We discussed that. Ultimately, what we were able to get done, Ms. Erickson was pleased with. We're working on getting the final floor blocks trimmed up. We did have some discussions about hard standards for mowing and upkeep as far as, you know, height of grass, the number, you know, things like that. And we're doing some research along those lines with Mr. Crenshaw's, a little bit of Mr. Crenshaw's help. There was some discussion about bringing in a, putting up some sort of registry for people to find out where their loved one may be buried at and make it easier for them to find. We will be doing some research on that, on what can be done and where we can put it and how much it's going to cost. And that was the gist of the meeting.
I'll add that I did get a phone call from Linda Martin that she is going to be resigning from that board and asked that we find a replacement for her. So I'll be looking for someone for that position. If you know anybody that's looking to serve, please send them my way. Any questions regarding the cemetery?
On that registry, is there something that could be kind of done online to where the?
We've got one that's online, but they were just wanting to know about having something at the cemetery that could be accessed, that would be accessed there. We do have a cemetery directory online that you can access, but they were wanting to know something about there.
In the past, they've talked everything from signage to a kiosk, but I don't know. It's just my knowledge of the conversation. Any other questions? All right, next item is Personnel Committee meeting on December 11th. Dr. Hannaford.
Biggest part of that conversation was our discussion on the economic development job description. Continue next step. Did a great job, sent us some information about a job description and also some salary comparisons. We looked at that, felt like we needed to change that a little bit, gave some instruction to Joe Don, and he's going to get those changes and hopefully, I think that job will be posted hopefully by the end of this week. We, agenda item, we'll be talking about some purchasing designation and limits. And then I think those were the biggest things. We did decide that the economic development need to be a separate position within the city, separate from the Chamber. We met with the Chamber Board and had good conversations and kind of working that out and how that would look in the future. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions? Thank you. Next item is Parks and Building Committee meeting on December 12, 2019. Mary?
Well, it was real short. I was the only one there because other people couldn't be there. But Joe Don talked about the professional building, two of the rooms over there and trying to figure out what we're going to do over there. And that was the majority of what we talked about on the Parks and Building that I can remember. Joe Don, do you remember anything else?
That was the biggest part is whether or not we wanted to make Suite A and B, two separate suites, again.
Was it discussed because of the new doctor or Sharon might needing it? We thought we might wait a while?
Yeah. There was that discussion. Discussed a little bit about Dog Park.
Oh, yeah, that one. That has been requested before, and it's been brought up again. And it's a very, a very needed item that we need to look into.
But that was the remediation of the mold, which I'll get into a little bit more and things like that was the biggest discussions about the professional building.
Any questions, Mary or Joe Don, of the Parks and Building Committee?
Dog Park thing, is it something that's where at Rec Park they would possibly?
There is one that's kind of planned out at the Rec Park. Looked at it, there's been some discussion about maybe putting it on the north end of the Hatfield Park or maybe even over here by?
The old armory.
The old armory. The biggest expense that you're going to be looking at is the fence.
You said there could be some grants that we could write?
Yeah, and there's, I think we can get, there's a possibility of some grants to get that up and going, and we're going to be exploring that. It really wasn't part of our budget plan this year, so we may take the remainder of this year and study our lesson on that a little bit and see if that's something we want to try to include in next year's budget.
Any other question? Thank you. Next item is the Finance Committee meeting on December 16, 2019.
Tonight, we reviewed insider claims, some of our large claims, just briefly. General funds, bulk fuel of $10,000. Airport was gas of $27,000. Street and alley fund, asphalt. And our culvert was almost, a little over $40,000, or excuse me, almost a little over $50,000. AEDA debt services of 14, and AUA fund debt services of $62,000. Got about $85,000 in cash right now, a little over $1.8 million in investments. Our sales tax and use tax was down a little over percent from same time last year. From month to month, it was about 9%, a little over 9% down. So we're watching that and hope to rebound next month. For the year, we've spent or covered about 50% of our budget, which we'll definitely be watching kind of our revenue and where that's going. But again, we've spent a lot on the front end, especially with our, the street and alley fund. Capital improvements, we've done a good job. We've got $2.5 million budgeted, but have only spent about $500,000 of that right now. You'll also see we've got reimbursement for the REIT grant, which we'll have an agenda item to accept that. Utility billing is pretty comparable to about the same time, down just a little bit this month. Some of the major projects, our water line on 281 North is done. The fire rescue truck will be done by February. They're just adding some of those components to it, but it should be done. Professional building was talked about, but we'll have a few AC units and heaters to put in. Joe Don's going to talk more, but our, the mold has been remediated. It was not near as bad as what was first believed, or first believed. And of course, the next big thing, our next step, you know, will be our big process of onboarding for that. And then we did get two maintenance workers hired, street maintenance, correct?
Sentations.
No, no, sorry, sentations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions? Thank you. I don't have anything to add from my report than what was stated in my other reports. Unless anybody has any questions. All right, manager's report.
Well, I'll start off with the Christmas party and awards banquet that we had Friday night. I thought it was very, very well attended. We probably had close to 150 people there with employees and their families. By far and away, I think it's the largest attendance we've had since we've been doing this over the past four years. I think this will be our fourth year. We did have, we recognized everybody from, you know, the shortest attendance, the shortest tenure with the city to the largest tenure with the city. Our shortest tenured person was hired in August. The longest tenure was hired over 41 years ago. So I think there's a lot of, a lot of things that went along well with that. We did add a couple, we had our standard giveaways that we did, but we did add a couple of new things as far as that I felt was very well received. We had a kind of a selfie contest where they took their pictures, both individually or as, you know, some of them did it as a couple and also as an apartment. Bridget, Greg, and Brittany Nix won the individual contest with, I think, 159 likes. The next one that would have been close to them was the Vasquez family, and they had 157 likes. Sanitation department, by far and away, run, they must have called out everybody, everybody they could find because they had like 146 likes on their picture. Just very, very well received. I think everybody had a lot of fun doing that.
How many did the council get?
I have that written down, but I think it was something like 46.
Did we get an award for least likes?
Well, I think that would have been me at 22.
You're not perfect, though.
He is.
Yeah. My personal is 22.
He got tired of likes himself, so he quit.
It's probably because I can't do it again.
We did recognize employees for completing one years of service, five years or 10 years of service. We had one, we did recognize as one retirement. As Beau has discussed a little bit, we are, the mold remediation is, for all intensive purposes, done. It was not near, it was not near as bad as what it was made out to be. But we've got that taken care of. They had to, they had to clean some ductwork in Suite D, I believe, and Suite K?
G.
G?
And J.
G and J. They had to clean up, they had to clean some ductwork in there. They'll do one more test to give us a complete bill of health, and we'll be finished with that. We have gone out for bids for the water pressure pump up on Boulevard. We did get our permit in today for that project. We will be accepting that permit next, at the next council meeting, and we anticipate having a bid to award at that council meeting. Did meet with some people, met with Oklahoma Baptist Children's Home at Oklahoma City, and they would like to put in a small housing development just south of the Homestead off of 11th Street. Something that we're looking at there. There are some challenges with that as far as access that we've got to get figured out, but that's going to be something that may be coming into fruition over the next year or so. Over at the professional building, we do have two AC units that we need to be, that need to be replaced. When we replaced the roof, we knew they were bad, and we took them down. We just need to make sure we get them back. We've got one person fixing to move into one of the suites, and we need to get that air conditioner heater back up and running. There has been a renewed interest in the professional building. We've had several people call and ask us, ask us about space and have looked, and that's kind of the way that goes. It just kind of goes in cycles that way. We'll be starting on the 6,000-foot wet line replacement from the well field in April. We are going to be working on installing some water line out at the airport. We have talked with engineers about this. It's been determined that that's going to require some DEQ permitting because of the length of line that we're putting in. So we're going to be moving forward with that, purchasing the equipment that we need to, and the meters that we need to get that all up and running. We have a list of several fire hydrants within the city that's going to be, that need to be replaced, and we're going to strategically replace some of those fire hydrants. We don't want to replace ones that are just going to be on a line that's too small, and if we hook up to the truck, we're going to collapse the line. But we are going to get some of the, I figured 10 or 12 of these fire hydrants replaced here within the next six months or so. Next step has been one of the major projects for us during this timeframe. We've met, we'll be meeting with, we've been meeting with employee groups. We'll continue to meet with employee groups, trying to answer questions, trying to get everybody signed up and onboard. Next step, we'd like to, next step's goal is to have the first payroll in January come from them. That'd be January 2nd. There's, I think, a lot to happen between now and then, but we do have a backup plan. We still are able to do our payroll if we need to for the first few payrolls if things kind of get crossways. Now, everybody should have received an email over the weekend from onboarding@nextstep.com to your email address. If you did not get that, please let Angelica or I know so we can get it resent. Make sure we, because I asked you, if you recall, I asked a month or so back what was the address you wanted me to use. That's the address they should have sent that to. I know I got my email late last Friday, and I've had a couple since then. So if you haven't got it, check your junk emails and see if it got put out there. Otherwise, let us know so we can make sure, because you need, you're going to need to get onboarding for that, for that process also. And, ma'am and council, that would be my report.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunn? Thank you, Joe Don. Item A is discussion and action on, well, item seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Mary on?
Item A, discussion and action on ordinance 2019-004 amending the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for the city of Alba, Oklahoma, as stated in the agenda. These are changes from OMRF related to IRS required changes, state law required changes, and then some other clarifications and cleaning up of language. The summary of changes is in your packet as well as the ordinance and the master plan and joint agreement from the, that we'll be approving. Joe Don, do you have anything to add?
No, I'd just like to say, you know, one of the biggest things that we're making changes on here is, it has to do with the loss of benefits clause that we had in our plan or what was called the bad boy clause. You know, there was, there was a clause within our plan that if you had done something illegal or inadvertently wrong, you get terminated. There was a chance of you losing your benefits. The IRS has requested that we delete that clause out of our plan and will now just be relying on Oklahoma state law in regard to forfeiture and retirement benefits.
Any questions from the council? I didn't take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance 2019-004 amending the employee retirement system.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve ordinance 2019-004 amending the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for the city of Alba, Oklahoma, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Item nine is discussion and, oh, is there a motion to declare an emergency?
I have a motion to declare emergency in a second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford in a second, by Mr. Sherman to declare an emergency for ordinance 2019-004. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item nine, discussion and action to acknowledge payment of $31,150 to Justin Daddy for the Tourism Task Commission reimbursement. This is what Connor was talking about in his tourism report. Seems to spending limits to the city manager, so we need to approve it.
And why is it so much? Do we always, does the ICE ask for that much?
I think.
I think this is more than, this is a bigger, larger amount than I remember him asking for in the past, but.
Slightly more, I think it's pretty, I mean, not that much more.
And this is for the?
Bull battle.
The stock and all that, all the, all the bulls and all that stuff he thinks?
Just paying for, to operate. Just paying for, to operate all of it, all of your, uh, I don't know what the guys are called, your, um.
Your stock contractors.
Your bullfighter contractors, your radio guy, your.
So the guys that pay their fee to get in, that doesn't cover the cost of anything?
It, it's gonna cover some of it. I mean, but I think the request overall was slightly more than, uh, last year. Didn't need it all. I'd have to double check, but nothing substantially different in costs compared to last year.
It's two nights, it's been around. I think they added another night, didn't they?
Oh, this year they did?
Well, last year was two nights. Last year was two nights as well.
They added afternoon.
Yeah, he added an afternoon event, um, a youth event. Um, it was volunteer. Last year it was just a quick little thing, and there was such a good response from that. He decided to remove a couple things at that as an actual event to get the youth involved. So it costs a little bit more, but it sounds to me like there's gonna be a lot more traffic because of that, make it a better event. Some of the weaker parts of the event were tweaked and changed. Um, I think he, he had a concert Friday and Saturday night. He removed the concert Friday. Um, it just has one Saturday now. Um, and they did, uh, I think they added some money to, um, winners of these events. Um, it's one of the higher paying events that a bull rider can go to, supposedly, and that brings huge names in. Uh, he listed off some of the people that are top five in the world that come to this, so.
And I will point out, at this point, this is a, this is a re, this is the, uh, spending limit. Uh, they have agreed up to $31,150. If he does not provide him, uh, receipts for that, he is, just gets reimbursed what he provides receipts for.
I didn't entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to acknowledge payment of $31,150 to Justin Daddy for Tourism Tax Commission reimbursement.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, a second by Dr. Hannahford, to approve or acknowledge payment $31,150 to Justin Daddy for Tourism Tax Commission reimbursement. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannahford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 10 is discussion and action to acknowledge payment of $25,987.41 to Pioneer Supply LLC for supplies to install new water line on Lane Street. This is the, uh, the REAP grant project for the water line, um, 281 North, and, um, we've got a couple items in the agenda for that, but, um, this is $987 more than Joe Don can spend without our approval. It was budgeted as part of the, the REAP grant that we applied for, and Angelica told us today that the check has come in from the REAP grant already. We just need to approve it. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, a motion to acknowledge payment of $25,987.41 to Pioneer Supply LLC for supplies to install new water line on Lane Street.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to acknowledge payment of $25,987.41 to Pioneer Supply LLC for supplies to install new water line on Lane Street. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannahford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
And item 11, discussion and action to approve REAP number 19-1. Project as complete and authorize the mayor to sign the affidavit for completion. Project's complete. Um, we have to, uh, sign off on its completion to send off to the, the REAP grant folks. Is there anything else on that, Joe Don?
No, um, I will say that we did, we did turn back some money. Um, but that was, the reason for that is that when we originally turned, filled out our REAP grant, we were told by REAP that $25,000 is your limit. So we built our project around a $25,000 budget, and then when, uh, grant was awarded, we were awarded $55,000. But there wasn't, for our project, there wasn't enough to, it wasn't $55,000 worth of work.
So some of this isn't, like, sometimes where they, when we do the work, that.
We could not apply for any kind of, no.
So actually what we're getting is just what we spent?
Right.
Any further questions? If not, I didn't entertain a motion.
I'd motion to approve the REAP grant, uh, REAP number 19-1 project as complete and authorize the mayor to sign the affidavit for completion.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannahford, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the REAP 19-1 project as complete and authorize mayor to sign the affidavit for completion. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannahford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action on Resolution 2019-10. A resolution of the city of Alba reducing the fiscal year 1920 annual budget in the amount of $3.8 million. This is a, uh, amount that was budgeted for the pool, um, the pool, um, not being a, something that we anticipate having expenditures for in this fiscal year at this time. Um, in order to, uh, better report our finances for the rest of the year, um, uh, this outlier is being, um, taken off of our, our budget. Um, any questions on that? If not, I didn't entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 2019-010. Resolution of the city of Alba reducing FY '20 annual budget in the amount of $3.8 million.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannahford, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve Resolution 2019-010. Uh, resolution of the city of Alba reducing the fiscal year 1920 budget in the amount of $3.8 million. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannahford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion and action on the calendar year 2020, purchasing designations and limits. Um, in the packet, um, this is, uh, basically the same thing that we, we approve every year. Um, I will point out one change, and that, I think it's only one change, isn't it, with the airport?
Oh, you, the, but it's been changed and you ought to have it listed in the, uh, it's been updated for the, uh, agenda.
Okay. Um, and it's a change from last year, um, but the airport manager is, has, uh, spending limit has been increased by the airport board, so.
Um, the finance director position was added. Um, there were several positions that, uh, the dollar amount was lowered, um, to meet, uh, current, you know, expectations. Um, really the only two department, the only two departments that were not lowered was the, uh, street department and the water department, and that's due to the nature of those, uh, of those purchases. Uh, when the street department is out making purchases for asphalt or oil or something like that, it will not be uncommon for them to need it, need up to $15,000. Uh, and the same for the water department. It would not be uncalled, uncommon for him to have to order parts for up to $15,000.
Are there any questions? Not, I didn't entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar year 2020 purchasing designations and limits.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannahford, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve the calendar year 2020 purchasing designations and limits. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannahford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, item 14 is remarks and inquiries by council members.
I just want to say I had a great time at the party as well. It was good to talk to the city employees, so, second that.
I think all the activities for Christmas that started around Alba, the square and everything looked really nice, and lots of comments and positive comments about what's going on. It's been good.
All right, we're adjourned, and we will open the Alba Utility Authority meeting. Angelica, when we're ready, please call the roll.
Winters? Martin?
Here.
Eckhart? Ham, or Sherman, sorry.
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannahford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held, uh, held November 18th, 2019, and approval of claims in the amount of $116,123.95, and payroll expenses of $52,669.41. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Stelling, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannahford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
That's all we have there. We'll adjourn the utility authority meeting and open the economic development authority meeting. Whenever you're ready, Angelica, would you please call the roll?
Winters? Martin?
Here.
Eckhart? Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannahford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. And all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 18th, 2019, and approval of claims in the amount of $27,476.66, uh, and payroll expenses of $12,816.73. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Wallace, to approve consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannahford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And we are adjourned. Thank you all.